This meeting to order today is Thursday, December 5th, 2013. Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Counselor Graney?
Here.
Counselor Camardo?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Rzika?
Here.
Mayor Quill?
Here. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
You remain standing for a moment of silent prayer reflection. Please be seated. Counsel, before we get started, we have a walk on Resolution Number 136. Is there any objection? For the record, I object to it, and I will get into that later in our meeting. So we'll add Council Resolution Number 136 to our agenda. Start out with our public to be heard. Clerk, if you would.
At this time, we will open our public-to-be-heard portion of our council meeting. According to Council Rules of Procedure, please state your name, address, and affiliation, if any. Keep your remarks to three minutes. Any remarks concerning individual employees of the city should be directed to the city manager, and rules of common courtesy and decorum will be followed. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone desiring to be heard? No one?
Ryan Coyle, Case Avenue. I just want to thank everyone that helped donate and help work for our Thanksgiving meal at Salvation Army. It turned out to be very successful. Just in a couple hours, Counselor Graney knows he was running around like a chicken with his head cut off for a while, but anyways, we served quite a few meals. Total number, I'm not really sure, because I didn't get a final count yet, but we ended up with maybe about half a pound of turkey left over. So, once again, thank you to all the public and everyone else that either helped at the meal or donated. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Quill. Anyone else desiring to be heard? Well, now, it's Christmas spirit. Everybody's happy this evening. Very good. We'll close that portion of our meeting. Move along to the approval of meeting minutes from November 14th, 2013. Do we have a sponsor?
I don't have them prepared yet tonight. I put a memo on your desk. Sorry. They're not complete.
They're not complete this time.
It'll be in your packet for next week.
This time, would you ask legislator Tim Lattimore? Mr. Lattimore? In regards to the landfill project.
Bad and a few other projects. Good to be here tonight, and congratulations again to the winners, and I know Debbie's one of them. He'll be handling some of these issues in the future, but it was nice to be with you, Mayor. Today, we happen to have Senator Schumer in town, and the senator was nice enough to pick up some of the issues that relate to the new milk plant, the $100 million milk plant, and the senator's going to try to help that project out with some of the import-export situations that we have with some of our neighboring countries. So it was very nice, Mayor, wasn't it?
It was a great afternoon. Senator Schumer is always, he's right on top of his game, just the knowledge that gentleman has, and he retains it, and he's able to bring it out in moments' notice. And he's good at remembering faces and names, so I say that's part of being a successful politician.
Well, that industrial park hopefully will double in size because of the milk plant, and the energy needs of that milk plant are very extensive, such as other plants that we have in the city. Our Nucor Steel is the largest user of energy on Niceg's line, and they have a very nice discounted rate in order to make their product priced right. So Archer Daniel Midland in Illinois, the other day, went to the legislature and told them, "We want a tax break on our energy bill for not five or 10, 15 years. They want a 30-year guaranteed rate on their energy taxes." So, energy is a big component of all these projects. And I know that when I sat in the mayor's chair, I think I left in 2007, there was an agreement that we had with Central Hudson in regards to concept, and the concept was that we were going to build a digester, which was going to use most of the sludge that we used at our sewage treatment plant, which is going to be an ongoing situation, the sludge. And we were burning sludge at about $2 million a year, and we had to do some upgrades to the hardware of about $5 million. So, we thought there was a better way to handle that, and the way to handle that was to build a digester. As you know, the county has a digester, and the city was supposed to have a digester. Now, I think it cost us about $800,000 to haul that sludge up to Rochester. You might have reduced some of that cost. I think I mentioned a couple of years ago that it's way out of hand. The little town, or the little village of Wheatport, a village, they take their sludge and turn it into compost, and they use it to all the neighboring gardens here and around the area. So anyways, sludge was the problem, and that was the reason that I looked into a digester back in the day. So we could save ourselves $700,000 and use the compost to use as cover material at night. Right now, we buy virgin land, what is it, Doug, six inches of virgin land?
Six inches of covered dirt.
Covered dirt every night. But the DEC allows us to use other materials, and the material that I wanted to come up with was the compost off the sewage treatment plant. So instead of hauling it and using it somewhere else, we could use it in our own landfill. I mean, it's kind of ridiculous to me to haul our own sludge to another landfill when we have a landfill in our own backyard, and it needs the compost in order to produce gas. I think the gen set that Mayor Yu signed and had three or four amendments, I think even Counselor McNabb even signed one of the amendments to the...
Mr. Lattimore, is this a political debate, or are you going to talk about the landfill, sir? And that's what, we're asking you to speak about the landfill? That was your request.
I thought you wanted to know about...
No, no, no.
Oh, you don't want to know?
You agreed to talk about the landfill. We'll be glad to listen to you about the landfill, but we do not need to get into a political debate this evening in regards to the Cogen facility.
Well, you have the Cogen facility onboard today, that you're going to buy it. Two years ago, two years ago, you were supposed to buy it.
Mr. Lattimore.
The power authority told you to buy it.
I have to rule you out of order, sir.
Oh, is that right?
Do you want to speak about the landfill, feel free to, but that's...
I want to, as a taxpayer, as a person that lives in this community, I want to make sure that the operational costs are down to the lowest it can be. Now, if you're not interested in that, Mayor, I think that the public is...
If you want to talk about the landfill, we're very interested. Well, we will limit your conversation to landfill. You've been recognized, you've given the privilege of the floor because of your stature as a county legislature. I would hope you would respect that and follow the script that was given to us that you want to speak about the landfill.
Well, the landfill produces gas, and there was a 30-year, we had two different engineering, Barton Le Judas and Sterns Wheeler, two reputable engineering firms, said that they had 30 years of natural or methane gas to be produced. And I keep hearing that you're losing money at the gen set because you don't have natural gas and you have, or methane gas, and that you have to buy natural gas. Now, I'm saying that the, if you look on any energy landfill gas, the energy project, Madison County has one that's very similar. They return a lot of money back to their city's budget. Chautauqua County has, returns a million dollars from their gas-energy project. Sonica Meadows is killing it with their gas-energy project. Why doesn't our landfill produce enough methane in order to supply that gen set? And the reason that the whole project came together was the fact that it was for economic development, and we had somebody who wanted to use the excess heat, power, in our industrial park. I'd just like to know what happened to those projects.
Apparently, they fell through because I don't remember them coming about.
They were there.
I don't know if you're asking me, Mr. Lattimore, or what?
Yeah.
And I really don't want to debate you this evening. I'm interested in what you have to offer, as I'm sure all of council is.
Well, we were at a $100 million milk plant today, and we're looking at different ways to service that plant that uses a lot of energy, uses a lot of steam, a lot of hot water, and we want it to be productive. And I'm saying that you had in your own backyard a landfill that had methane, that was supposed to feed the Cogen, which cost avoidance at the sewage treatment plant. It was supposed to be a win-win, as these other projects are in other counties. I wanted to know what happened to those projects that didn't come through.
Thank you, Mr. Lattimore. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I'd like to just hear you give a little history on that.
I'm entertaining you, and giving you, we're giving you the privilege of floor as a legislator. We expected to hear something from you. We did not expect a debate to answer questions and so forth and so on. If you're done with your dissertation, we appreciate it. We thank you for being here with us, and we'd like to move on with our business.
Well, I mean, during the last campaign, there was a lot of conversation about...
Mr. Lattimore, we're not talking about the last campaign.
Well, we want the public to know, don't we?
The public has spoken. The public has spoken. They have voted. If nothing else to add, please, thank you very much. Merry Christmas to you, sir.
You too.
Public announcements. City managers' report.
A few things, Mayor and counselors. I know Counselor Camardo and other counselors have asked questions at various times about economic development, so I'd like to kind of give a little bit of a recap on what's happening, what isn't happening, and what is happening. Since the staff reductions in the Planning and Economic Development Department, we function more in responding to inquiries and requests as opposed to being proactive. So, the staff's very diligent. When somebody contacts us, they're interested in a parcel, or they're interested in visiting with the city about a development project, we receive them with welcome arms and try to give them as much information as we can. We just haven't had that proactive outreach that I know everybody would like to see. The good news is that the KUGA Economic Development Agency has stepped up and is implementing the one-stop-shop concept that was discussed years ago, and as I think everybody agreed, would be a good central focal point and provide an ability for developers and existing businesses to have a single place to check in, to talk about, or discover where there might be development potentials, where there are vacant properties, where there are incentives. I attend the monthly CETA meetings along with Mayor Quill and Jenny Haynes, and we basically monitor what goes on there. And as an organization, I have seen them become more diligent and deliberative in their efforts to attract new businesses. The whole concept there is really, other counties, other areas in New York have these kind of consolidated operations, and if KUGA County and Auburn don't have that, then we're falling behind because others are being successful with those coordinated one-stop areas. Although CETA's financial support largely comes from the county and has increased actually this year almost double, I have not seen CETA behave as though there's any political boundary. The activities of their board and their staff have been what's in the best interest of the entire county, including the city of Auburn. And a good example of that is on their website, they include a lot of Auburn properties. So if you log on to kugaed.org, you'll see some property pictures and some specifics. So people shopping through that website, they're going to see Auburn profiled in that What we do do at the city, you know, Jenny and her staff, all of us try to work our best to support economic development through the activities of entitlement permitting and those kind of things that unfortunately developers have to go through, their bureaucracy, and it's just, it's one of those necessary evils. But one thing we're working on is to try to be fast with those, be efficient, be effective, because my experience with developers is the faster you can get them through the process, the more inclined they're going to want to build in your jurisdiction. So, we are doing things, but we need to do more in that regard to be developer-friendly. I think that's a key for us. So once people decide they want to be here, they should have a good experience in building their project. In addition, the city is still providing administrative support to Ada. They have an active project now with the expansion of Mac Studios. We're also engaged with a company called CGI Communications in the production of a series of one-minute videos that will profile Auburn as a desirable community with opportunities for business and new residents. So, these are just little one-minute snippets. They'll be on our website. We'll be able to use them on the public access channel and, you know, for our outreach activities. So they'll help profile the city. They're being produced at no cost to the city. The company that does this does it for other cities, and they sell advertising as part of their effort. CETA's also revamped their website recently, and as I mentioned, they include a number of city properties on that site. And then, I think the other thing that we do, and I know the council does, is it always helps when, in these meetings, which are televised, and in your efforts with the public, we always are promoting Auburn as a good place to do business. One other question was whether, you know, we have an inventory of the land that might be suitable for development at the city, and I've got a preliminary list I'll just hand out, that has a number of parcels that, some of which we may not want to, you know, redevelop or privatize, but these are parcels that are controlled by the city. They're largely of commercial nature. We've excluded all the residential parcels because they are abundant, but they're not economic development parcels. If you look at this, you'll see the brown highlighted parcels are in the City Brownfield Program. So those are sites that are former industrial sites. They've been in large part investigated and reviewed, and we have documents on those. The yellow sites, we would want to retain some ownership of those, perhaps not the entire parcel, but some because they are part of the Owosco Trail and Greenway Project. And then the other parcels are in the Tech Park and various other areas throughout the city. So we've identified the tax map number and the assessed valuation on those and some additional information. So hopefully, this helps address that question and desire for a short report on what we're doing with economic development.
Doug, while we're... While we're on the subject, what's the status of the Donna McCarthy site?
We believe it's clear for us to do sale activity, to do some minor cleanup on the surface, and in fact, we have a confidential inquiry about the site now, so we're going to hopefully see something move forward there.
What would your plans be to start cleaning, you know, make it look aesthetically look good, you know?
Well, we, the inquiry we've had now, they said that take it as is. So, if that doesn't pan out, we'll want to get Public Works out there in their spare time and pick up some of that rubble and take it to the landfill. Another item, just, I know the council's aware of this because I think you all got the letter from the Seward House Museum. Just to give you an update, over the last six months or so, we have had dialogue with them about their master planning effort, in which they want to open a gate onto the parking lot, the Seward parking lot across from City Hall here, for the convenience of their visitors, and remove all their onsite parking to our parking lots. We've discussed that with them. We've discussed also the potential to trade their maintenance of the Seward Park, which is probably a $7,000 or $8,000 a year cost to the city, for that consideration of allowing a gate to be installed, losing one or two parking spaces associated with that gate entry, and possibly providing some parking for some employees at the Seward House Museum. We still have some due diligence to do with regard to what we can actually do with the park parcel, but just let you know, in light of that letter, that it's an active discussion item, and would come back to the council in the near future.
Now, the city owns the point there, I call it, right next to the Seward House. The city owns that piece of property?
Yes, yes.
It was deeded over from the Seward...
Right, right. And the concern is, we may not have the ability to transfer it back to them, but we may be able to enter into some type of agreement where they have programming control and maintenance obligations for it. The last thing I have is, with peddlers and solicitors, and those who've had them come to their door know who I'm talking about, there are people that go door-to-door selling various goods and services. By law, they're required to come to the city to get a permit, a peddler or solicitor permit. Even with those permits, we've had some problems with these individuals in terms of the character of the people that are showing up in the neighborhoods and their behavior. So, just want to let you know, working with the police department, we've implemented a background check requirement, and those people will now have badges issued by the city that identify them. So, for the public's benefit, you know, if they don't have the badge, they're not official. And even if they do have the badge and they're misbehaving in some fashion, we encourage people to call the police department.
Doug, is there any way incorporated into that, into our website, so that people know if they want to look on there to say that they've been given a license by the city, that they are legitimate?
That's a good idea, and we can do that. Maintaining it might be a problem because these people come and go, but we've talked about ways, yeah, to get the word out.
They'll come with a badge that'll say the city of Auburn, because...
Well, it says solicitor or peddler on it. We've tried to put that in bold letters.
Those are to make up, so if they could just check on a site or something, that they've been licensed by us, that would sure as help some people along.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you.
Doug, maybe could we get a copy there to show the people what that badge is supposed to look like?
Well, it looks like your city badge, but it says peddler across the top. So, there'll be a picture on it, their name, and...
They'll have the permit with them, too. They're supposed to carry the permit from the...
Yeah, and they'll have a permit as well.
They can ask for that.
Well, is this, Doug, is this like a credential? I mean, does it carry a identification number, maybe the permit number right there on the badge itself?
Yeah, it's issued by the police department. And so, it's a very hard-to-duplicate kind of thing, especially...
Understood.
And Doug, that comes after they've had a thorough...
Yeah, we don't give them a badge until they've cleared a background check.
And what's the, and the penalty if someone's soliciting without this is covered under...
Well, we charge for the solicitor's permit, we charge for the background check, and we charge for the ID badge. In the past, we've basically, as a penalty, we pulled all of that away from them and no refund for the fees they paid.
Okay.
We haven't prosecuted anybody, and if they did commit some type of crime in a neighborhood, though, we would do that.
Okay.
I'll say it, counsel. Presentation, petitions, and communications?
None.
Seeker Resolution Number 133 of 2013, Determining Unlisted Action and the Significance of Environmental Impacts Related to the Acquisition of the Landfill Gas Cogeneration Facility. We have a sponsor. Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor Rzika.
Seeker Resolution Number 133 of 2013, by Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor Rzika. Whereas the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York proposes to purchase a landfill gas cogeneration facility, including furnishings, equipment, machinery, or apparatus from Auburn Energy LLC, and to finance this purchase through the issuance of bonds. And whereas pursuant to Article 8 of the Environmental Conservation Law as amended, the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, the Seeker, and the regulations adopted pursuant thereto by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation as amended, the City Council desires to comply with the Seeker Act and the regulation with respect to the project. And whereas the City Council is the only involved agency as the term is defined in the regulation, and therefore, the City Council will not coordinate its review of the project with any other agency, and it will assume the responsibility of lead agency as this term is defined in the regulations. And whereas to assist the City Council in determining whether the project may have any significant adverse environmental impacts, the city staff prepared a short environmental assessment form for the project, a copy of which was provided to the City Council. Sorry. And whereas the City Council has examined Part 1 of the EAF and has completed Part 2 of the EAF, considering the potential adverse environmental impacts of the project, using the criteria specified in Section 617.7 of the regulations. And whereas pursuant to the regulations, the City Council has considered any other available relevant information in order to make a determination of significance as to any potentially significant environmental impacts that may arise from the project. Now therefore, be it resolved by the members of the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, as follows. One, based upon the examination of the EAF and the City Council's knowledge of the area surrounding the project, the City Council makes the following findings and determinations with respect to the project. A, the project is described in the EAF. B, the project constitutes an unlisted action as the term is defined in the regulations. C, there are no other involved agencies for the project. D, no potential significant environmental impacts are noted in the EAF for the project, and none are known to the City Council. E, as a consequence of the foregoing, the City Council has determined that the project will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and has so indicated by checking the appropriate box on Page 4 of the EAF. And further, the City Council hereby authorizes the city manager to sign and date Page 4 of the completed EAF. Two, the city manager is hereby directed to file the city's records that are readily accessible to the public, a copy of the completed EAF with respect to the project. Three, the resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you. Discussion? Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor Graney?
Yes.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Rzika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie.
Bond Ordinance Number 12 of 2013, authorizing the issuance of $4.9 million in serial bonds to finance the acquisition of the landfill gas cogeneration facility. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Rzika, seconded by Counselor Camardo.
This was previously read into the record. Do you want it read again, or just the first and the last section would be sufficient?
First and last.
Okay.
Is that agreeable, Mr. ...
Yes, I think that's proper.
Bond Ordinance Number 12 of 2013, by Counselor Rzika, seconded by Counselor Camardo. Section 1, the City of Auburn, New York is hereby authorized to acquire a landfill gas cogeneration facility and maintenance building, including the acquisition of furnishings, equipment, machinery, or apparatus required for the purposes for which such facilities are to be used at an estimated maximum cost of $4,900,000, and to issue an aggregate $4,900,000 in serial bonds pursuant to the provisions of the local finance law to finance the estimated cost of the aforementioned object or purpose. Section 15, this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Mr. Rossi, I believe we need a supermajority. Am I correct?
Yes, you do. You're on a four-vote.
No discussion? Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'll take that. Counselor Graney?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Rzika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie.
Counsel Resolution Number 134 of 2013, approving a loan to the Auburn Community Nonprofit Baseball Association, Incorporated. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Rzika, seconded by Counselor Graney.
Counsel Resolution Number 134 of 2013, by Counselor Rzika, seconded by Counselor Graney. Whereas the City of Auburn, hereinafter referred to as the city, is the owner of Auburn Double Days Baseball Team and Falcon Park Baseball Stadium, and the city has retained Auburn Community Nonprofit Baseball Association, Inc., hereinafter referred to as ACB, to act as its agent to manage and operate the Double Days Baseball Team and Falcon Park. And whereas ACB experienced a year of poor attendance in 2013, with a number of games being canceled because of inclement weather, and experienced a high degree of turnover in the position of general manager that disrupted normal marketing and promotional activities, and as a result, ACB did not generate enough revenue to pay its debts to vendors. And whereas ACB has requested financial support from the city in the form of a loan in the amount of $125,000 payable over a two-year term with interest at a rate of 3.25%. And whereas the proceeds of said loan will allow ACB to pay current outstanding indebtedness to its vendors, and failure to pay the vendors would result in a withholding of services and supplies in the 2014 season, which would seriously handicap the ability to maintain the franchise. And whereas ACB is taking actions to improve its revenue in the coming year by recruiting a new general manager, retaining a sports marketing consultant, and hiring a new accountant to update its financial record-keeping system, and would provide, as a condition of the loan, that payments be made quarterly beginning March 2014, providing the city with monthly income and expense reports... income and expense reports, and providing access to its financial records as requested by the city. And whereas, it is necessary that the Auburn City Council approve the loan of $125,000 to ACB pursuant to the conditions stated above. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby approve a loan to the Auburn Community Nonprofit Baseball Association, Inc., in the amount of $125,000 for a term of two years payable quarterly commencing on March 2014 with interest at a rate of 3.25%, with the condition that the proceeds of said loan will allow the payment of current outstanding indebtedness for vendors to the baseball association, and that the loan is conditioned upon the city receiving monthly income expense reports and the city having access to financial records of the baseball association. And be it further resolved that the city treasurer is authorized to advance the sum of $125,000 upon the execution of a promissory note pursuant to the terms and conditions of the resolution signed by the Auburn Community Nonprofit Baseball Association.
Counsel, with us this evening is Mr. David Dom from the ball team. If we have any questions, I'm sure Mr. Dom is fully prepared to answer them.
Maybe, Dave, could you just come up and, you know, give us a brief outline where we're at and where we're going?
Yeah. Happy holidays. Good to be back in the U.S. I've been up in Toronto all week and got back about an hour ago, so you'll have to excuse my appearance. We've got some, much of what Debbie said, what we put in place, is some changes. We're going to go ahead with a new accounting system, new accounting people. We're interviewing the general managers this weekend. We have nine candidates, three from within Keighley County, six from outside, ranging all the way to Arizona right now, so there is interest in taking the position. We are, we have a sales staff going out beginning Saturday afternoon. We're going to be meeting with them. We've never done that as an entity before. We have four volunteers that are going to go out and sell advertising. Basically, we had a downturn in advertising about two years ago. Looking back through the books, we took a, just a step backwards in advertising from the people in the area, really, I think, due primarily to the economic situation back then, and they just never came back. So, we're going to aggressively go back after advertising so that will cover our overhead and take care of these issues for us going forward. So, again, we've got a very good relationship with Washington Nationals. We expect to be re-signing with them literally in the next month for another two-year agreement with them. So, they love Auburn, absolutely love coming here. It was told to me by the now-special assistant to the general manager, Doug Harris, that they have no intentions of leaving, but until I see the signed piece of paper, I'll believe it. But again, telling me face-to-face, I don't think we'll lose them. They're a very good brand for us, so it's, we'll be able to market them. This past summer, as you know, we just, we got murdered with weather. Four rainouts, 10 of our games, we had rain that afternoon, and really affected our attendance in those 10 games where we normally averaged about 1,200 people. We were down in the 200 and 300 range because it was that cloudy kind of thing day, and people just weren't going to come to the ballpark. So, as compared to the season before, where we had no rainouts, and basically, we had about 55,000 people in attendance, this past year, we were down about 37,000 total of people in attendance. So, the weather truly affected us. Another one that I think that our players were underachieved. We had some very good players on the team. The league was very strong this year, and our team was not, and we ended up, for the first time, with a very bad record, the first time since 1987, that we had a losing record. So, the Nationals, again, assured me that they'll do all they can do to place a competitive team here in Auburn, and next year. So, with a competitive team and some of these other issues behind us, we look to give the city and residents a good place to go to watch a nice ballgame and enjoy a good evening.
Dave, talk about the uniqueness of having a professional team in Auburn compared to, you know, the whole United States.
Yeah, basically, there's 160 minor-league teams in the country, actually in North America, because there's a couple up in Canada. I'm told there's 33,000 cities in the United States. Not all of them want a baseball team, but I know for fact several do. So, there's a great interest that, by people that don't have a team that want a team. So, we're pretty lucky to have this franchise here in Auburn. Like I say, it's a gem. Having been born and raised on North Division Street, and being a bad boy for the team back in 1968, '69, it truly is, and I think it's a great offering that we can put out to our residents, so...
Now, Dave, out of that 160 teams, that's all there's going to be allowed, there's...
Yeah, there's no more.
Always ever be.
There will be 160 teams, no matter what. So, if in fact, there's a, I know there's, in fact, there's a small city in New York losing their team this, probably in the next two years to West Virginia, to a bigger city. So, you know, again, there's, it's the erosion from the small-town baseball to bigger-city baseball is current and happening. And again, you know, with your help through this resolution here, we hope to, and we will keep it here in Auburn for a long, long time.
Dave, could, Counsel, go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Could you give us a brief update? We received a large grant from New York State for the upkeep and the ballfield lighting.
Yes, New York State, yeah, Historical and Parks and Recreation gave us a large grant for the playing surface and improved lighting at the ballpark. It's underway. We were going to put the new grass down last week, and Mother Nature is killing us in 2013, I tell you. But the playing surface will be the best playing surface in the NYPD League. We have local contractor here, Landmark Enterprises. The Cunningham's are putting it in for us and are doing an outstanding job. Again, the Nationals are tickled pink to have this done. You know, they express concern about some of the, basically, the unevenness of the playing surface, and quite honestly, in their point of view, they're putting a million-dollar baseball player in Auburn, New York, and they don't want a bad hop coming up and knocking them out and literally losing that investment in their players. So, it was a very important thing for us to do with that, intertwined with that, with some of the lighting improvements we're going to do. We really never met the minimum lighting standards for minor-league baseball since we put the ballpark in in 1995. With this grant, we'll meet minimum baseball standards. They'll be inspecting us this year. They come every three years to look at us, so they take like measurements and the like in a grid on the field. So, we'll finally meet that one. And with some of the lighting that we take down, the plan is to take over to Casey Park and put in, put in over at the softball fields.
My grandfather was an old dairy farmer, and he would have called that snow, he would call it poor man's fertilizer. Just keep that in mind, so...
Counsel Razika?
Yeah, I, since this whole thing came on board here as far as being an article in the paper, I had a significant number of calls saying, "Please, keep baseball in Auburn." I would have never expected that I would see this volume of calls in such a short time. And it only goes to say that there is a very dedicated core group of people. And to me, if we were to lose, baseball would just take and leave a big, huge hole in the heart of the city. I think we need to encourage this. This is a lot of potential for tourism and the associated expenditures. And let's face it, people do like the American game of baseball.
Yeah, we see, on the average, 10 or 12 people from outside of Keighley County coming in to watch games. We, you know, we have an agreement with the Syracuse Chiefs over there, where our ticket is good in Syracuse, theirs is good here. And we'll see, and any given, whenever Syracuse is out of town, we'll see an influx of 25 to 30 people just from Syracuse. So, it's, absolutely. I mean, there's a great fear of losing the franchise, you know, and from what I know right now, there's no chance that we're going to lose the franchise by any means. I do have to go to and speak in front of the NYPD League Executive Committee concerning the issues that we're having right now, and explain to them how we got to that position, what we're doing to get out of it, and much what, you know, what we just talked about tonight. So, there is a concern, but I'm sure that the league president, Ben Hayes, is an absolute proponent of baseball in Auburn. He loves small-town baseball, and he wants us to succeed, so he's going to do everything he can do to help us make it happen. So, we got a lot of people working hard on this, and we will prevail on this, definitely.
I think, Dave, just with your enthusiasm that you're showing us tonight, that they already have a good start.
Thanks. There's a lot of us involved, even back 1995 when Mr. Lattimore was involved. I mean, like I say, this goes back a long history, so thank you, as a matter of fact, and thank all of you for helping us out on that. I truly appreciate it.
Dave, be prepared. Last year, for Founder's Day, we challenged the county to a tug-of-war, which we won two out of three. Mr. Chapman is talking about having a city-county wiffleball game.
We will put that on before a game.
Absolutely.
Without a doubt. I just got to make sure that we have enough of EMTs on hand to...
I know, some of those folks are getting old, and watch out for them.
I'm not looking at you, Mayor, by any means.
I know I'm old, so, so be looking for that.
Oh, yeah, we're looking forward to that, and more use of the facility, too, so it's...
It's a family-oriented facility, and it's the greatest family entertainment, in my mind, in the city during the summer months. I think it's wonderful down there, so...
And it is a good bargain for the money.
Yep. Just a quick note, people got to come out and support our team. You got to get people in them stands.
If they really...
If they want baseball in Auburn...
They have to support it.
Any other questions, or...
Thanks, Dave.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks for making it back in from Canada. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, then.
Counsel Graney?
Yes.
Counsel Camardo?
I'm going to abstain, please.
Counsel Smith?
I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I think this would have been an issue that the new council, I would agree, would be, should be able to vote on. I think this was time-sensitive. It is a brand-new issue. This is not something that council has been working on, especially since it does deal with borrowing and finances. Unlike the other issues, the CON, which we've worked on for over a year, and the other issues that have been brought up, which we have been working on, this is a big part of the budget, but I do vote aye.
Counsel Razika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie.
Resolution Number 135 of 2013, authorizing the city to apply for a New York State DEC Water Quality Improvement Grant. Do we have a sponsor? Counsel Camardo, seconded by Counsel Razika.
Counsel Resolution Number 135 of 2013 by Counsel Camardo, seconded by Counsel Razika. Whereas the City of Auburn, New York is located along the Owasco River Outlet, which is listed as a New York State DEC stressed priority water body with minor impacts due to water quality problems. And whereas the City of Auburn acknowledges the importance of maintaining the water quality of Owasco Lake and the Owasco River Basin. And whereas the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation has released a request for proposals for fiscal year 2013 Water Quality Improvement Program project funding, for which local municipalities are eligible to apply. And whereas the City of Auburn, in partnership with the Central New York Regional Planning and Development Boards, is interested in applying for grant funds to cover eligible construction, planning, and design costs. And whereas the water quality grant application will address several objectives associated with mitigating non-agricultural, non-point-source pollutants such as, one, retrofit and conversion of dirt parking lots to porous pavement for the purposes of managing stormwater and snowmelt runoff; two, retrofit of existing asphalt-paved parking lots with permeable pavement, green infrastructure; and three, harvesting or collection of urban stormwater runoff through bio-retention swales or stormwater sewer systems. And whereas the City of Auburn does not currently have the funding to pay for 100% of the water quality improvements needed for management of stormwater runoff from municipal facilities, and is necessary to apply for and obtain a New York State grant funding assistance. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council, the City of Auburn, New York, one that the mayor's authorized, is, or an authorized representative, is authorized to submit a funding application to New York State DEC in the amount of $300,000 for necessary construction, planning, and design costs eligible under this grant program; two, that the City of Auburn recognizes and agrees to the required grant match of 25% of the total project cost, estimated at $75,000, which will be incorporated as part of the 2014-15 Annual Road Program; three, that the mayor or authorized representative upon notice of funding award is authorized to execute a New York State DEC grant contract and reimbursement forms or other necessary documents to complete the project; four, that upon notice of funding, the city comptroller's office is authorized and directed to create a city expense and revenue capital account to track project finances; five, the resolution takes effect upon its approval and adoption.
Thank you. Discussion, counsel?
Just, Doug, do you have any locations that have been identified so far?
Christina's here. She's been doing some research on this. If I can ask her to come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. So, you were asked about locations?
Is there any identified sites that you have so far?
Sure. Working with engineering and Mike Talbot, we have a couple of opportunities that we're looking at. The Y parking lot, which is due for repaving or resurfacing, which would be eligible for porous or permeable pavements. The Loop Road parking lot, which would be behind the banks there, which is actually Dill Street parking lot, has about 57 spaces in there. There's constant concern about snowmelt and runoff that's ruining the tree bed that's there along the roadway, so we're interested in trying to manage that stormwater runoff as well. And then, adjacent to the salt barn, right now, we don't have the means to properly treat the water runoff that comes off of when we're washing the trucks and the salt from the salt barn during the winter months. So, we want to try to retain that a little more, have that filter before it enters Crane Brook. So, those are a couple of the projects we're looking at. We're hoping to partner with the Regional Planning Board. They have some opportunities for us, so we'll see if this works out.
Thanks, Christina.
Sure, thank you.
Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counsel Graney?
Yes.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Aye.
Counsel Razika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie.
Appointment Resolution Number 136 of 2013, appointing a civil service commissioner. Do we have a sponsor? Counsel Razika, seconded by Counsel Camardo.
Appointment Resolution Number 136 of 2013 by Counsel Razika, seconded by Counsel Camardo. Whereas the Auburn City Charter, Section C-10A in part, requires that three civil service commissioners shall be appointed by the City Council. And whereas Commissioner Christopher DeAngelis has resigned his position, and there is a vacancy in that office for a civil service commissioner. And whereas Auburn City Council is desirous of appointing a commissioner to fulfill the unexpired term of the commissioner who has resigned, and is desirous of appointing Daniel Emme residing at 358 North Hoops Avenue, Auburn, New York, to be appointed as a civil service commissioner for the City of Auburn to fulfill the unexpired term of Christopher DeAngelis. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby appoint, as a civil service commissioner for the City of Auburn, Daniel Emme, who resides at 358 North Hoops Avenue, to fulfill the unexpired term of Commissioner Christopher DeAngelis, who has resigned, and that said appointment shall become effective upon the taking of the oath of office by Daniel Emme.
Counsel, I voted against bringing this on the floor today, and I said I would explain later in the meeting, and this is the point, we'll explain it. I have no problem with naming forward to the civil service commission. My concern is that we're, once again, we're moving fast forward. We're not allowing the public to share their concerns or whether they agree with this particular position. As Counsel Razika said earlier, he received many phone calls in regards to baseball. The people at that time had an opportunity to voice their opinion to the council, or I'm sure to other counselors. By moving this fast forward, we are not given the same opportunity. We have two more. I understand that it's counsel's wish to move this forward, I understand that, but we still have two more meetings before the end of the year, and then council changes. Lastly, I'm disappointed that the same courtesy extended to the new members at that time, Counsel Camardo and Razika, are not being followed through this evening. It's a personal opinion, I think we're wrong in that regard, and I wish we would, we take items and take them in a certain order so that everything is given the fore version with the public, so...
In all due respect, Mayor, I disagree. I don't know when we've ever had a public share their concerns about appointments to... share their concerns about appointments to civil service commissions. I don't know when that's ever been done. And I'm not taking away the importance of a civil service commissioner, but it was two years ago, with the election going on between, with Counselor Rzika, and Counselor Camardo, and Counselor McNabb, and Counselor Brower, that I wanted to put off hiring the city manager, which is a far more important position than the civil service commissioner, and allow the new counsel to be able to vote on that. And that did not take place. So, again, I think you need to be consistent in extending courtesy. This was a four-year term. If Mr. DeAngelis didn't resign, he still would have been on there. It's council's priority to make this pick, and in two years, this council, the new council, will have the opportunity to choose whoever they wish to sit on that board.
I'd like to pass these up here to the dais. And once you have them all in hand, I'll proceed to read it.
There's a date on this?
That's what I was given. Please pass them down. What this is, is a letter of recommendation that I had received from Dan Emme, that he received from the then-police chief, Gary Ginata. Says, "To whom may I concern? I have known Daniel J. Emme for more than 30 years. I've known him personally and professionally. He has worked with me and for me in excess of 26 years, and during that time, he rose through the ranks of the police department, from patrolman to sergeant, and achieved the rank of captain of police before retiring in February of 2010. Dan has always exhibited a great deal of professionalism and takes great pride in his work. He strives to ensure that the people's rights are always protected and that offenders are treated fairly. During his tenure as sergeant, lieutenant, and captain, he supervised entire shift of young inexperienced patrolmen. The shift that he supervised was the midnight-to-eight shift, which typically gets the youngest and greenest people. He, as a captain, along with the sergeants that worked with him, did an excellent job of overseeing major crimes and working with little or no supervision. One of Dan's biggest priorities in his life is his family. He will always put his family first ahead of himself, even to the point that he moved up his retirement date six months because of family obligations. Anyone that knows Dan will tell you that if he is a friend of yours, there's nothing he won't do for you. He's always gone out of his way to assist anyone in their endeavors. In closing, this letter doesn't even come close to telling the amount of respect that I have for Dan. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me." And it was signed respectfully Gary Ginata, Gary J. Ginata, Chief of Police." So this fellow here has this recommendation from his then-supervisor at the time, prior to his retirement. So I really feel that his services, the police, and not only in the police department, but his personal business dealings and things like that, along with his experience with civil service qualifies him well. I have no problem with this candidate.
Counselor Camardo? I'm just going to mention a few things here. I'm not going to debate anything that's been said so far, but coming from 15 years' experience on a civil service commission, because there's only three members, I think the board needs to be populated as soon as possible. Because of budget cuts recently, the civil service commission lost the secretary to the commission, and a lot of that work is dependent upon the three people that are there. So I was there. I know this. When you're down to two people, it makes it very difficult. So I understand your comments and concerns, as everybody has said here this evening, but I do think that the board needs to be populated as soon as possible.
Anyone else? Clerk, have you called a roll, please?
Counselor Graney?
Yes.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Rzika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
No.
Carrie.
Local laws?
None.
Table legislation?
None.
Mr. Selby, under other business?
Okay, we have three items, Mayor. The first is the discussion. Reorganization is specifically focused on the movement of codes to the fire department. Kind of recap, this has been discussed during the budget session. It was something that we have now brought back. Research shows that in cities, codes departments, about half the time are in the fire department, half the time they're in another city department. So there's no particular guidance. This is one way is better than another. What we've provided is a very short analysis of how this might look if it's implemented, with the code staff staying physically in their current location in City Hall to facilitate their interaction with the public, and the convenience of parking here compared to the inconvenience of parking at the fire department. And then we've looked at the workflow issues associated with the jobs and what the firefighters might be able to do without interfering with their firefighter obligations, and also basically not leaving people standing when they have to respond to a fire, which has got more priority than responding to a scheduled appointment. So that's kind of the essence of the document. There's some items here we discussed with regard to training and the level of training that we might want to have for firefighters. Some of the activities wouldn't require additional training, some would. So it depends on how we structure the work of the firefighters. And finally, there is the issue of the work itself, and which union properly represents the work of code enforcement. The CSEA has advised us that they have great concerns about this proposal. We have shared this with them. I haven't received any specific feedback yet, but they are aware of this document that's in front of you this evening, and we expect to have conversations with them, as well as the fire department union.
I have some questions, if I could, and you might be able to reflect upon us a little bit. How did it work in the past? You were chief then, weren't you, when codes went to the fire department?
It did. We went through a couple of versions. They worked out of the fire station, and then they worked here, both ways. It worked. There was advantages and disadvantages to it. The statements or the document that Doug has, Mr. Selby has, is pretty accurate, with all the concerns and problems, and good points and bad points.
And Doug, would the office be able to be staffed more if we had it at the fire department? Would it be more accessible or be able to be open the days of the week that it needs to be open?
I'm afraid not. What would happen actually is a greater paperwork burden would be placed on the office with more code inspectors in the field. So...
So with all the money we spent on this new computer...
Well, that will help, but there's still the physical paperwork that needs to be processed in the office, and we'd be fielding, you know, another half dozen people in the field to do investigations and follow-up on complaints.
We spent about, what, $80,000 on computer upgrades and to take a lot of the paperwork out, and now we're going to have more paperwork because of that?
No, I'm just saying additional field workers will generate more work in the office. Certainly, the software is going to help a great deal in terms of scheduling and all that, but there's still the production of letters for grass and snow and those kind of complaints, which we're thinking might be the kind of work that the firefighters can do without interfering with their other obligations.
Now, right now, Doug, they go out and inspect vacant buildings.
Yes.
It's pretty much what code says.
Yeah. And it's in the job description of firefighters to do these kind of things.
I was just going to ask you. It appears that it's in the distinguishing, or typical work activities of a firefighter here that's in front of me.
The, I'm sorry, Counsel, are you...
No, I'm not.
I think it was last week, earlier this week, the City of Syracuse has a similar software, their planning department. And they've downsized their department because of the software. They looked at, I can't remember the dollar amount of savings, but they will be purchasing software to do just that. My concern is here, so again, if this software is utilized properly, it is going to be a cost savings. And I've talked to contractors who have been able to have worked with this service, and they've said it is much easier if it's utilized properly. But my concern is, could this go, could this become a potential overtime issue, where if it is under the fire department, that this could be used as gaining more potential overtime because of planning responsibilities, or, excuse me, codes responsibilities?
We would have to prioritize the work, and this work would, I would propose, fill in during their downtime.
Okay. I mean, in looking at the reports, I don't see how that could be a problem. I've gone over time reports of the fire department, and there is a significant amount of time where they can do this. I've looked at a five-month span, and I looked at a year span. And, you know, we have days of 10 hours, six hours of downtime. So hopefully, the new counsel, we look at this very carefully and see that this is not a cause or used as an excuse to get more overtime.
Aren't more communities moving in this direction, Doug, though, that I, some of the research that I've done, that they're trying to consolidate services and try to have more people do, you know, more of the work, so to speak?
Less people doing more of the work.
Less people, yes. I'm sorry, yes.
It's happening. Cities are having to look at all sorts of different ways of doing business. I know Jenny's here, and Brian is here, and they've done some, probably more research than I'm aware of, if you want to ask them questions.
No, I was just asking if more communities are doing this, and...
I can't say specifically that they're doing this, but we can say that about half the communities have it organized this way, the way we're proposing. Half of them have it the way we have it today.
But Counsel, to your point, software is only as good as how well it's utilized.
Sure.
So that's something you and Counsel Rzika, the mayor, the new counsel, is going to have to really make sure is happening. One, to understand the software, and B, to make sure that it's being utilized properly.
You're never going to get away from the human element of putting a software package in. It's not going to happen.
No, but it can be. If it's run efficiently and it's used, it can be much more effective and much more efficient.
It can be steered either way, to fail or to prosper.
Well, a key point in that is the education and the training of the individuals that are going to be using the computers, the software. That's key.
I agree with that, Mayor. I, for one, would like to know when that software rollout's going to occur, and when the training is going to take place, whether we're going to have some off-site trainer come here in-house, or whether we're going to have our people go to an off-site training facility. These things need to be, have the adequate training in order to be effective. There's very little software packages that most people can just pick up and totally utilize all the functionality. Case in point, I mean, when you get into more technical softwares, and I'm sure that this has a lot of tweaks and nuances, I mean, it was intended to be used by both the fire department and codes, and beneficial to both these departments, it's going to take some level of, not only familiarity with the software due through training, but it's going to take some time exposure. And I'd like to see the rollout happen as quickly as it can, simply to get the learning curve over with and the familiarity established.
And we've talked to the company about the schedule. They're concerned about pushing it, for obvious reasons. We don't want to roll it out prematurely and then have, you know, an Obamacare website issue where people can't actually use it after we promote it. So we want to make sure it's right. We want to make sure everybody's trained properly. And that is a good point. We see the same problem with our Munis software today. It's a great package, but we haven't invested in the training, and as a result, our employees only use 20 or 30% of the capability of the system.
Which is why, you know, you really should have one or two people who are very well-versed and can actually be the admins for this, and provide kind of like help-des type of support. If someone can't remember a command or something like that, or where is this command located, things like that. I mean, that happens all the time. Where I work, we use numerous software packages that are highly technical, and of course, like anything else, we have a CAD administrator who oversees all the 3D and simulation softwares. So, and that's crucial, because these packages are highly complex and complicated. The data management gets to be a really huge part of this, as well as the day-to-day support issues of, at times, things that don't play well together for some reason or other, or due to some errors on the operator that corrupts certain files or things like that. Not that that happens with any great frequency, but all these things are potential issues that we need to make sure we're covered, that someone can come in and maintain this software. Of course, we have probably a licensing agreement that also has a maintenance agreement with it, I'm assuming?
Yes.
And it would provide support and upgrades on an annual basis?
Yes. And this is a cloud-based system, so the issue of maintaining servers and things like that...
So data storage is not going to be a huge issue, then?
Shouldn't be.
Okay. And how secure is that data in the cloud?
It's, I hate to quote an encryption level, but it's, we've asked them that question. They consider it very secure. It's domestic servers. They're not offshore. And they said they meet whatever the ISO standard is for those systems.
So I really think that the, as quick as we can get this implemented and the familiarity gleaned, the faster we're going to see the actual benefits of it.
Doug, can you give a brief explanation how the software is going to work and what it does?
Yeah. It's a software that's used throughout, well, versions of it used throughout the country. The particular software we're developing is viewpoint software, and it's very interactive, both for our staff and for the public. So from the public's point of view, when it's fully implemented, you'll be able to log on, you'll be able to submit an application for a permit, building permit. You'll be able to, it'll come to the city, it'll be reviewed. It still require people behind the scenes to review this stuff, comment on it. But once approved, they can pay for their permit, print it out, and basically, really not even have to come to City Hall unless it's a fairly complex or big project, or there's a particular issue. So from the customer's point of view, we're trying to make it easy and make it a 24/7 operation to do most of the permitting activity. It also has scheduling modules, which will help our code enforcement officers, who are having to do a lot of things on paper now, and reporting through tablets, potentially the ability to issue either compliance orders or certificates of occupancy right there in the field upon concluding an inspection. So a lot of capability, both for our staff and for the public.
Thank you.
I guess, if I can ask?
Please.
Is there a desire, I guess, on the part of the council to move this activity forward on the codes issue? So when we, you know, we're going to be sitting with the union leaders and...
I have no problem in moving it with the fire department.
Okay.
No, but the key thing is, we're just going to have to watch the utilization of the software and make sure that manpower and that we're having the added responsibilities not used as a way of boosting up overtime, which is something that department heads and city manager and council is going to have to watch.
Okay. And because it is in the description of the firefighter, as I seen it here, it, I really see the, I can understand the union's concern, but since it's been there and it has been a past practice at one point in time, I can fully understand why they would have some level of concern, but it's hard for me to say, you know, what they can say is wrong about it.
Code enforcement's been like the redheaded stepchild for many years, almost like nobody, everybody wants him, but no one wants him under their wing. It's a, I'm sorry. It's like a stepchild. I'm being corrected because it's a redhead. I know they are. So, you know, both departments do a great job, and I know Jenny's had him under her wing for many years. At one point, it was under Corporation Council. At one point it was under Corporation Council, in between it was the fire department, back and forth and they're all very capable of doing their job, but they just need one individual to report to. That's, that's, in my mind, that's part of the problem. They don't have a chain of command to ethically work through. Nothing against Jenny, but Jenny has a full plate as it is, so whatever the council's desire is, I, I have no.
And to add to that, which is beyond our control, is they need, need help behind the bench, referring to the judges. All right, that's, that's the problem where you have a habitual problem with a certain landlord and the judge just decides to punt or turn their heads to the problem. That's, that's what code enforcement also needs, but that's beyond our control.
But, but again, since you're, you're bringing this up at the, at the, at the timeliness of where we're starting this negotiation process with the, with the unions, I think this is, is the best time to, to introduce this.
As you say, council, it has been past practice.
I think too, it's, this is not looking to replace our current code enforcement officers, it's not a measure to replace them. And neither with, with the software either. I think it's to, to make, make their jobs easier.
Well, the software is going to be a supplemental tool that's going to help them do their job better. And, and again, with the additional sets of eyes and, and staffing, it should help, help some bottlenecking out of there. So I, I really think overall it should be a, a major plus-up.
Yeah, would you want it?
Yep, budget.
Please. Budget, yes, budget, I'm sorry.
Just to kind of go back a, a little bit, you have in your packets some graphs, those are summary graphs. The detailed budget reports were presented to you last month. This is for the period ending October 30th. What we're trying to do is provide you with the detailed reports by the second Wednesday of each month. Bob's been good about actually getting those out earlier. And then the third meeting of the month is to present a summary, kind of highlights some of the, the budget of the, up to that point in time. So your next report would be scheduled for, your meeting on December 23rd. So what I'd like to do this evening is kind of just walk through some of the, some of the graphs and to say overall, things, the trends are good. We're spending at a lower rate than forecast. That is early in the process, but it's, it's good news so far. So if we look at the comptroller's office just rolled up.
Pardon me Doug?
Yes.
Do we, do we have these on a, on a memory stick or some kind of slide that we can throw up on the screen?
I haven't, no, I haven't had time to consolidate them that way yet.
Okay.
We can, we can do that and I, I would like to do that in the future.
It, it just, you know, you, you'd engage the audience a little bit, I think.
I'm just going to call out a few numbers just to highlight what's, what's going on. As of the end of October, the comptroller's office was projected to spend about $40,850. Year-to-date, they've spent $17,609 largely due to the vacancy in the, the comptroller position. So that was a budgeted position, we haven't been spending that money.
Doug, is it including the consultant?
Yes, yeah, and we have had consultants in part-time to help cover the position and develop
Okay.
some of the documents. In the accounting department, budgeted to spend $60,816, spent $52,630, so pretty much on track. The treasurer scheduled to spend $88,733, or $78,975. And the assessor's office was scheduled to spend $65,400 and they're at $60,000. So those are, those are good trends and hopefully we can sustain those. In the sanitary sewer and sewage treatment and sewer revenue funds, the only concern we have there is the revenue from, for the sewer fund. We're under our forecast, we're looking into that in terms of whether it's an artifact of how we bill and how we get, get the revenue and because we're not billing on a, a monthly basis for all these accounts. So that, that's something we need to keep an eye on. In the other categories, we have spent less than projected. You will know, in some areas, like in sanitary sewers, we've encumbered more money. So when we talk about expenses, those are, we paid the bills, that money's gone. The encumbered money is often a standing contract that's issued at the beginning of the year and we draw against that throughout the year.
Let me just back you up if I could. You said the sewer revenue was down, is that what you're?
It's lower than we projected at this point in time.
How much are you looking at that's lower than projected?
Uh, about $400,000.
How much?
$400,000.
$400,000.
We projected to be at 2.4 million, we're just a little over 2 million.
And we have no idea why that is?
Well, as I said, we're looking at whether it's an artifact of how we bill and receive the money. The, the billing is.
So you might be behind in billing is what you're saying?
Yeah, it's, it's a quarterly bill, so the revenues don't come in.
So when are you going to be?
Even numbers, as we, we forecasted kind of a regular monthly increase.
But when will the quarter be up so you can get a better understanding?
Don't know.
Can you find?
There's nobody here to tell us right now.
No, I'm saying, can you find out, let us know, please?
Same, same situation exists with the source of supply and water filtration where we projected higher expenditures year-to-date than we've actually experienced. In transmission and distribution, we're actually a little bit above our forecast expenditures. This could be due to main breaks, things of that sort where we've incurred some additional overtime. And water revenues, they too are somewhat below where we expected them to be. Also, we think an artifact of the billing cycle. But to, to your point, Councilor Camardo, we'll, we'll find that out and be able to tell you better. In the police department, year-to-date, they're about $150,000 under where we expected them to be. And the fire department, with their encumbrances, they're actually over budget. But if you look at the total expenditures year-to-date, they're about $50,000 under budget. And that includes a number of months where we've had to pay additional overtime as a result of the minimum manning requirements. So a lot of what the excess is in their budget is driven by encumbrances for maintenance agreements for the vehicles and things in the, in the department, service agreements on software and things like that. In the Office of Planning and Economic Development, again, we're below expenditures. We have a vacancy in that department that is partly responsible for that. And the last thing I just want to call to your attention is, is the council recalls, you had lengthy discussions about the fees for development and code enforcement and those were adjusted upward to get more into the market range and to help us recover some costs. And the good news is, that appears to be working. So if you look at revenues in the code enforcement office, they are up about $27,000 over where they were last year. So we hope that trend continues, that will help that area of the city to be more, basically paying for itself. It's an area that doesn't always impact the whole citizenry of Auburn. So as developers come in, their permits are now, the, the charge for their permits are now closer to paying for what it costs to provide their service.
Doug, just a quick question, I, and I, I, everybody has a problem with spending money and I, I know I do, but if we're up $27,000, we could almost afford at some stage of the game to hire a clerk in that office to get it open, couldn't we?
Well, that's what I've talked to Jenny about, is that we get to a point where it looks like they are sustaining themselves and creating enough revenue to support a position. We may want to come back to the council and ask for that.
I heard Jenny says the fire department's problem, so.
Oh, it is, maybe it will be.
Whoever is something we need to look at if possible.
It, it is a service that's lacking down there and you run into the people in the hallway continuously, they're very frustrated and understandably.
Questions, comments?
Just, it's good, good work on keeping expenses, expenses down and I know we challenged the department heads to try to come up with 10% and reductions in their budgets and that might be possible by the end of next year if trends keep going the way they're going.
Hope so. I hate to make forecasts this early, but it's good.
Well, halfway through. It's really early.
Yeah.
Well, halfway through, we're, you know, December, so that's good.
Our last item is just to bring back the discussion on the landfill. So if I can ask Mike to come forward, at your last meeting, we, we just handed out the presentation that Mike has. So between now and then, maybe you've had time to take a look at it and I'll ask Mike just to give a recap and then we can discuss it.
While I'm plugging this in, everyone probably noticed there's, we didn't, here are the public works. We have so many different accounts and categories and varied services that we do. What I'm trying to do is come up with a format that really works. And what I'm working with right now and hopefully it'll get out to everyone is our distribution of expenses. And what we did is, and I've just, I've just haven't handed these out because it's, I've gone back four years and looked at expenses and charted them by month. So this helps me a lot. I know some of the bar graphs are, are different, it shows what we've spent, but this actually shows. So I'm hoping to be able to get through all of them. If something helps, next week. I got a mess here. So where we are is what we, what we did is took a couple of different scenarios of where we are and bring everybody, refresh everybody. This is the impending rate change we have and we're trying to break it down more per material type. So what we did is, you know, of course, when you forecast anything, you have to make assumptions to go by to give you a good baseline. And I think we're all in agreement that we're aiming for about 60,000 tons per year. What we're hoping to do with that is, is not only maintain our, to pay our expenses, but also extend the, the life of the landfill. So these assumptions, and these are in tons, city generated about 10,000 tons, MSW, that's from outside sources, 37.5, CND, 12,500. Each of these scenarios, there's no increase in the city rate, but this scenario does start with MSW at $50 a ton. So if you do the math on that, the CND revenue, revenue has to make up the balance, which is $915,000. So, but we also incorporated having a higher CND rate, we probably lose an estimate about 20% of our business. You know, it's probably a little bit conservative, possibly not. So the new CND volume with a loss is 10,000 tons, we'd lose about 2,000 tons, we think. Now scenario one is to raise the, scenario one is to raise the CND fee to generate, not to generate, but to, to match that deficit, to address the deficit, so, my bad on that word. City rate remains unchanged and we're still assuming there's a 28% volume reduction. And each of these three scenarios, the revenue requirement is the same, it's 3.1 million dollars a year. And that is, how you come up with that, it comes out in different ways, but that's what it costs to, to meet all of our obligations. So jump a bullet there, you're at, the city stays at $31 a ton, MSW's at $50 a ton. And to pay that difference, the CND would have to be raised to $91.50 a ton. So we'd probably, that would be a, a tough increase. Scenario two, same, the city rate is unchanged, but we're also going to adjust the MSW rate and the CND rates. So the revenue requirement is still 3.1 million dollars a year, city stays at 31 a ton, CND, MSW's raised to 55 a ton. You can see what that would generate, a little over $2 million. And then CND raised to $72.75 a ton. So that's how you'd come up with the 3.1 million there. And that's assuming if we implement these rate changes that we do get the volume. Scenario three, this is one that's been mentioned of accepting absolutely no CND. So in order to do that, city rate unchanged, the MSW would be the only thing left to make up that deficit. So revenue requirement is still 3.1 million, city generates at about 310,000. So the MSW rate would have to be raised to $74.50 a ton. And that's how you'd come up with your 3.1 million in the scenario of 60,000 tons with no CND.
Just to, so we can get a comparison, what are you charging, what's our, our rates right now, so that's?
Well, most, most haulers are at $39 a ton. And this year, you know, our, our permit year is, is calendar year, January through December. So we're going to be right at about 60,000 tons this year. So as, you know, and being, because we cut off a hauler and, you know, we haven't chased any, any long haul garbage.
So that's MSW is $39 a ton and how much is CND?
If, right now, the way the contracts are, it would be the same.
It's the same rate?
We don't, you know, we ask them what they bring in and where it's from, but they're paying the same rate right now. So in, you know, with these scenarios, obviously, you can see where there's two different rates, MSW and CND. And it's going to be difficult for us to, you know, to ask each time, what do you have in there? Because, you know, as we all know, they're going to say, well, I have MSW because it's, it's cheaper. But, you know, we're going to have to really be on the ball and make sure that we're inspecting it.
Mike, if I understand this correctly, ticking scenario three here, right, just for argument's sake. The MSW would raise to 74.50 a ton, which is approximately double of what it is now.
Correct, for some of these haulers, yeah.
Excellent, okay.
Now, for, for people who do not have a contract and just have pickup trucks full of stuff, it's currently at $72 a ton.
72.
Yeah. But, you know, but there, the majority of the garbage is under some type of contract that comes in.
So, so Mike, the way I see it, scenarios one and three are kind of almost at the extremes and scenario two is kind of more in the middle ground type of approach. If you could flip back to scenario two again, please? Okay, now the city rate would remain, as you say, unchanged. Now the CND currently, this would be from haulers coming in, that's almost exactly what a city resident would pay for, for both the CND and any MSW that they bring in, in, let's see, a truck, correct?
Correct, that's $72 a ton. Yeah.
And the city self-charge pickup rate would be the, the 31 a ton, is it?
That's what we collect at the curb.
Right, that's curbside pickup.
That's what the general fund pays. And, and I think we have to remember also, anytime we adjust that curbside rate that we pay our solid waste fund, also is going to impact the general fund.
Okay, and then the MSW, that's the, the hauler rate of 55. So we would go from 39 to 55. We kind of thought that there would be some, you know, sensitivity level here that's, that where you, you may get less but actually have the same intake or maybe on the best scenario that you would have a little less and, and make more money. Do you think the $55 a ton is going to scare them away?
Well, it's speculation. I hate to make business decisions for other people because that's theirs to make, but.
Well, you're, you're, what I'm saying is you're probably closer and you're probably hearing, I'm sure they're screeching because.
Yeah.
You know, like.
But you know, some of the people, even if we raise it a dollar, would screech.
Well, I, I understand that, that, that's just the business sense, but.
Yeah.
I mean, is it genuine, have you received any real genuine pushback or is it just, oh my God type of, you know?
No, I think it's genuine.
Genuine?
I really do. But then again, it's up to them to decide what they want to do. And of course, we, we value everybody's business.
Understood.
But we have that 3.1 million dollars a year to, to deal with.
So if we, you know, like I said, we're, we're still kind of kicking us around and being, scenario two is kind of the middle ground. If, if, if we were to even roll back somewhere between scenario one and scenario two, I mean, to what extent, which, which end of this, this line do you weigh heavier? I, I, it would be ideal if we could make it with scenario two. But I'm a, I'm a bit concerned that one of the major haulers will, will, will go away. And of course, our, our fixed costs are there, so. I think somewhere between scenario one and scenario two is, is probably our, our target zone.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we have, why don't we plan to vote on, I mean, first of all, are we interested in raising these rates and voting on that? Okay, so why don't we schedule? So, why don't we schedule for the 19th to have something voted on and confirmed? Next week, we'll talk about this again. If we have any proposals of our own, let's work on that. Let's send them to Mike. Let's send them to Doug and ask Mike to be brutally honest about this. You know, Counselor Smith, you're insane. You know, you've been sniffing too much methane down at the landfill, whatever. There's no way that this plan will work. But have him be brutally honest with us. But let's propose something. Let's send it to him. And so, next week, we're looking at this. I'm just looking at the calendar. And then, maybe vote on this the 19th, if we need to, the 23rd. So, we can wrap this up. I mean, I certainly don't... If we come to that point where we're not comfortable with these rates, then we'll just, you know, have to wait for the new council to decide. But I'm still running some numbers in and some things I got to send to Mike's way. I just got to send it out to him. So, we want to plan on the 19th voting on this?
Sure.
It's fine. I just... I got just a couple of questions now. With these scenarios, you're looking at 10 years' life expectancy at the landfill.
Well, like I said, the survey... We're going to survey probably within the next two weeks. We'll know more after that.
And when you do have the contracts or sign contracts, what do you do a year at a time or how?
Well, we've done it in various fashions. And once again, how we're going about it this way is different than we've done in the past. How we've done it in the past is we would... We have negotiated directly with the haulers and gotten the absolute highest price we can get. Then, we would bring that back to council to approve or disapprove. This, I think, probably knocks out a step, so everybody's on board with the rate we're going forward with. So...
And just the last question I have, Mike. Are you still making about a $300,000 transfer to general fund every year, correct, for administrative?
Yeah.
Mike, is the timeframe doable? You said it's a calendar year contracts.
Well, that's for a permit.
For a permit, okay.
So, and that's why it's a little difficult because obviously, our fiscal year is from July to June. Our permit year for the landfills, January to December. And our hauler terms on their contracts are all over the place. You know, some are April to March, some are August to July. So, it's a little difficult balancing. But the important one is the calendar year that the state requires us to follow.
One other consideration, too, is even if these rates are approved, I think we're going to have to look at them in three to six months.
Yes.
Because if we lose... I mean, if the CND rate's raised and we lose, instead of 20%, we lose 50 or 60%, it's going to shift the burden back to the MSW rate. So...
I know. This is going to be a multi-variable optimization here.
And at the same time, by... We have to take a look at it in three months or six months, but our haulers are going to know that, too. So, they're going to take the tactical...
Yeah.
We'll put hauling in to get them to lower their prices. So, we're playing our hand before we...
Yeah, but they still have to take it somewhere.
They're going to go to Senna Comenos.
What's that?
They're going to go to Senna Comenos for $20 a ton.
The other thing that Mike and I've talked about is we're talking about taking 60,000 tons a year. We're permitted to take 96,000. So, there's a... There's some capacity there that if we could do a put or pay contract where we say, you know, if you're willing to pay us for 10,000 tons a year, whether you put it in or not, we might be able to give you a better deal. That would help give us some cushion. Right now, we're talking about break-even operations.
Yeah, and but would that cushion as the rapid demise of the landfill space?
Well, if we... I think if we control it, if we don't go to the full 96,000...
Sure. I mean, we have to watch that.
When you ask... Yeah, I guess you got to put a permit in. You're going to ask the state to stay at the 96,000 tons or you're going to ask them...
Yeah, our permit's good. They're good for 10 years. So, unless you make a modification to it for whatever reason, even, you know, a modification would even include if we did something differently with our leachate, you would have to go for a permit modification. So, they might weigh in at that point, but they won't come back and, you know, for... And say, "We have to..." You can't take that much.
Now, you're going to ask me another question if I can. Cover material that you're putting down to the dirt.
Well, actually, I almost forgot. It's actually included, and I didn't mean to cut you off, but maybe if we continue on a little bit... Because I know it always comes up, landfill cover. And what we do and how we go about it, we're required by law for six inches of cover soil at the end of each day. And for obvious reason, you know, this... What's considered a vector are seagulls, anything that can drag garbage around. Not only, you know, foxes, anything, deer, they can become a nuisance. It's good for fire suppression. You know, you need every so often, even as you come up to your landfill, you're required every so often to have a layer of soil there. So, if you have a subsurface fire, it's going to stay in one elevation. This is... And if you go what's called... You need intermediate cover if you're working in one area, and then you're not going to be there for over a month because, you know, the operating phase changes. So, these are the requirements at a three-to-one ratio, which is required by law of... And where we fall within this range, you know, rarely do we go over 300 tons a day, and that's incoming garbage. And that's how the math correlates. So, and this went... We went back a couple of years. You know, in 2011, we took in roughly 95,000 tons of garbage as a three-to-one ratio. We would have needed 31,500 tons of cover. You can see what we purchased on the left is the cover, the alternate daily cover. That's what we charge people to bring in. So, you can see we were a little bit under probably what we were supposed to be. Everything got covered, but I think we were a little bit more efficient probably that year. If you look at 2012... Now, 2012, we had an exceedance of cover, but that was stockpiled. So, and if you see it 2013, as we continue on, you can see this, you know, we've really had to buy... And this is a speculation throughout the rest of this month. So, you know, we've had a purchase of about 2,000 tons of cover, and we've had about 10,000 tons of alternate daily cover come in. So, what we're doing, you can see there's a difference between the required 19,9 and the 12,000 that we've taken in. But what we're doing is using the stockpiled material from last year. So... And these are approximate densities when also what comes out at the end of this 12-month year. We have our annual report due to the state. What we do is calculate our compaction density. So, we're always at about 0.8 tons per cubic yard, which is good. So, cubic yard, you figure three foot by three foot by three foot, and we're packing in about 1,600 tons of garbage in that. And a lot of that's due to the new compactor. It was heavier that we purchased. Hopefully, everyone can remember when we did that. Now, the cover soil, obviously, it's finer grain than garbage. It's going to compact more, so it takes up less volume than garbage. But it's our job to minimize how much we use. We have to meet the requirements, but obviously, you don't want to fill up things with cover. So, and the actual density is varied depending on the refuse and the soil type. So, ours, our cover soil, we don't have any onsite mining. We'd have to have a permit for that, but we just don't have the material. So, we either get it through alternate daily cover or we have to purchase it. So... Now, alternate daily cover also is different. It has to be approved by the state. You know, we can propose any material we want, but we have to provide a sample of that material to the state, and they have to approve it. And like a lot of places, the states had... Their solid waste division has taken a hit employee-wise. So, turnaround time in the last year at the state level has been a little bit difficult, not only for permitting and little things like this, but it's a little bit tough.
Now, Mike, just as a sideline on Franklin Street with all the activity or whatever, where is that excavated dirt in the blacktop, things like that? Where's that going right now?
Counselor, I'm really not involved in that. If it's coming... Probably some of it's coming to the landfill that's being stockpiled. What we do is weigh it in and stockpile it. I don't know. We'd have to check with engineering on actually where that is. I don't know if they're reusing some of that material.
But that's the question I was going to have for you, Mike. And I heard it might be a problem that we're having at the landfill is that we got to be careful you don't not getting clay as cover dirt because that's having a problem with the drainage and flooding out some of the wells down there. Is that possible? That happens when you get clay as cover material and not draining the... You know, it's not able to drain, so it's going right to some of the wells and you're getting...
Right. Obviously, the characteristic of clay, it's very small soil particles with a very, you know, probably 10 to the minus seven or 10 to the minus eight sometimes impermeability. So, water does not go through. And that's where you can get some perched leachate or surface water. Every landfill has outbreaks, they're called, of leachate. You just have to address them. But no, we don't take in... Ours is more of a sandy silt that we get, local around here. Now, there is, like I've said before, as far as clay goes, our site is undermined by glacial till, which is kind of unconsolidated material, but it's very dense and very hard. So, it's almost impermeable.
So, are we still having problems with the wells at the landfill for the collection of methane is my point?
Well, like any methane well, some produce, some don't. It's... You're always... It's speculation.
We have our...
But if they're filling... But they're filling with water, though, you're going to have a problem with it, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, they water out, and we pump them out. And, you know, Mark and his folks do... They're out there every day doing it.
Yeah. Mike, excuse me. I was going to say, Mark, we have our lead guy out there that's monitoring our gas well production and things. If Mark, if... I know it's kind of cold, but would you want to talk to that or...
[laughing]
Oh, I think... Oh, it looks like you might even be coming prepared.
[inaudible]
Oh, okay. If you can just kind of give us an overview of what you feel is the production rates of gas and things such as like that on the landfill?
Well, right now, the... With the cold weather coming in, naturally, the methane production has dropped. We're averaging now right around 48 to 49% methane with the big weather swings that are coming back and forth. So, we're kind of on a roller coaster right now. The two new horizontals that we're putting, we've had them running now for four months, and they've been actually real good producers on it. I believe we're looking into the two others that are watered out and what to do with it. I guess we're looking into dropping the header down. I'm not sure. I'm not up on that.
I think that's something we're coming out of the end of this year, once we go into 2014. Because now that there's... The system is a little more advanced and the wells are a lot more numerous. It's not as easy anymore just to stick a well in and go on your merry way. Now, we have to disconnect headers and move piping so we can get equipment in, and it's a little more involved. And it takes a lot of coordination with Mark and his people that he has in the field.
Getting to be quite a spider web, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It is.
Mark, with the soil we're getting in the landfill, you don't see a problem with?
No, the wells that are all watered out and that are... That have died now are wells that were put in 10 years ago. The newer wells, it's just a shot in the dark. When you put a well in, I think out of the 13 new ones that were put in, I think six became non-producers. It's just a shot in the dark. So, you know, when I go to... When we go down there and look, I don't see a problem, you know, any of the soil going down through. And it's like Mike says, it's, you know, a matter of compaction. Sometimes you hit it good, and sometimes it's just not there. But so far, the, you know, the wells have been producing, I feel, right on target. So, you know, with cold weather coming in, you know, they're just going to stop producing. And the last projects that they had done over the summer, the east side or west side of the was covered up on landfill two.
Well, where the cleanouts are on that side?
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, everything's... As far as I'm concerned, everything's right on target.
And theories and technology chain, we've seen it change since we started installing wells. I think back when, you know, at the late '90s, early 2000s, when this was still kind of an emerging field and an emerging science, the technology was you drill as deep as you can, and you put a very short stick of screen in there, which is a slotted section which draws the methane in. It's a... You know, you draw it laterally with a vacuum. Now, techno... You know, now we've learned that you screen a lot more sections. So, when you put a vacuum to it, it's drawing from different elevations. So, to answer your question, if you do have an area with maybe some impermeable material, whether it be a block of concrete, you're going to catch that gas, whether it's above it or below it, because now you've screened and connected all of the garbage layers. So... And I think, and Mark, I wasn't... Back then, when they were putting the very high amounts of sludge in, that's... We've had some problems with those wells back in the mid-'90s when they put... They lagoon some sludge. And I think the wells in that general vicinity have been...
Yeah, that's just in the general area where...
Yeah.
Yeah, back in... When the incinerator was being done and we landfilled it, it's right in that general area on the east side that we put sludge on there. And that's just about where they watered out.
I think one of the problems was it wasn't mixed with the garbage. The volume was just too much, and it wasn't mixed with our garbage. And all of a sudden, you have, you know, you have a highly fluid material there.
Yep, thanks, Mark. I hated to put you on the spot, but I mean, you're the landfill gas expert here.
Counselors, everyone in agreement with Counselor Smith's suggestion that we...
I think we need to move on this. And again, we have to keep our finger on the pulse of that.
Can you just finish up one?
Sure.
Counselor Smith, I understood you to say that you would like to work on this again next week and to vote on it the week after. Mike, correct?
If... Yeah, if we feel we're ready.
Is that agreeable, counsel?
And Doug, I don't know if you... You and Mike have a set plan as well? I don't know if there's a scenario that you would like to see as far as raising the rates?
No, what we've proposed is what we think might be reasonable scenarios. But again, we don't know whether we're going to chase away people, and if we do, we're going to have to readjust rates, so...
Yeah, like I was saying, we're going to have to kind of keep our finger on the pulse there and see what...
Yeah. The unfortunate thing is, we've got a competitor just down the road. If we were on an island by ourselves and 50 miles away from anybody...
So, your recommendation is to leave it alone as is?
No, we're losing money. We can't not do something.
So, which scenario would you push forward?
Number two.
Okay.
Or some close variation on that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Counselor, other business for counselors?
Uh, yeah, it's... I had a... I got a cost at my church about from one of the ladies there that is a little bit difficult to ambulate. And she says she's brought this issue up. And again, it's about the kiosks. She's not comfortable with the pangol system and was basically complaining. Again, it's the same scenario where we had the snow build up and being walking within assistance devices, difficult to get to the kiosk and come back to the car. I don't know. Do we make an allowance for this at the snowfalls for the... I mean, do we get a little bit of a, you know, some kind of unofficial grace or...
There is unofficial severe weather. Mike, those guys are still under Mike's top.
Sure.
Can you say something with regard to the extension of courtesies during inclement weather on parking tickets?
Yeah, and to validate that person's concern, I think we, too, as a department, have have to get better at keeping it fresh on our mind when we do have, not even a significant snowfall, but to keep those areas clean. And if you talk to her, tell her I'm sorry that we will get better at it. But anytime anybody feels they've been ticketed unjustly, there's a process they can go through, and, you know, hopefully, if they see the enforcement people out there, maybe they can plead their case right there. But also, they have a job to do. And of course, the other end of that is if they're not doing their job, then they'll feel the pressure from this end, so.
It's, it's a difficult thing to manage. I mean, when you think about it, for certain people that have to have difficulty ambulating and manage the snow, and, and the trip to the kiosk and back can be somewhat hazardous for them. So I, I think, I mean, it would seem to me more mindful if the, if the fellow obviously sees that these individuals have some obvious reasons why they can't get back and forth quickly. I would think it'd be more than reasonable to assume that, you know, he would more than likely give some kind of, cut some slack, or so to speak. So I would think it, it's almost like a on-the-spot judgment call from him. And I, and I hope that they would be sympathetic to those that have some difficulty moving around. And, and perhaps that's the policy, or whatever, is maybe they can take and make a weighted decision on the fly.
No, I think that's reasonable. And once again, if anyone out there, if there's an area that maybe you think we've overlooked, please give us a call at the Public Works, and we'll do our best to make it right as quickly as we can. Because we do forget things at times, when, you know, in the heat of a storm, there's certain hotspots that pop up. And unfortunately, as you're on your way to do one thing, you get pulled in another direction. So that's no excuse, but we could use some help sometimes at identifying some of the areas that we may have overlooked.
You've got to be, everyone has to be sensitive, that you've got to, when the snow falls, you've got a job to do just to keep the streets clear and getting them opened up. And that, this type of, you know, where the snow gets piled up against the curbside or whatever, even though you take time at, you know, when you have the opportunity to offload it with the, with the loaders and such, that, you know, there is some, you know, I'm going to say bandwidth issues here. It's, it's not intentional by any stretch of the imagination. It's, it's simply a matter of, you know, availability of manpower and allocation of manpower. I mean, you're, you're getting them out there, trying to clear the, clear the streets, and, and, you know, some of the smaller stuff just has to wait.
Well, hopefully, for that person, we'll do better for him.
Well, that's the goal, but I, you know, there's a, there's a level of achievement that I, you can never get at 100%. I just don't believe that.
It's just, we'll try.
But not, well, with, you know, I mean, if you had, if we could afford a much larger DTPW staff, I mean, I'm sure the problem wouldn't be mitigated quite rapidly. But given the fact that, you know, we're under some financial constraints here, it is, it is being handled, and, and, you know, it has to handle, be handled in a prioritized fashion.
Anything else, counselor? Counselor Azika or anyone else? Counselor Azika?
Well, I have one small thing, and it kind of got brought up to my light.
Sorry, counselor.
That's okay. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'll keep you here till midnight.
We all have to be here together. We all enjoy it, so.
You know, I just enjoy the company so much, Mike.
Come on out for coffee.
Oh, sure. You're buying, right?
Absolutely.
There we go. Everyone heard this, all here. Well, I was going to say, in light of the civil service appointment, there's some policy I'd like to see us consider and possibly set forth on all city boards and appointed positions. If we can make a list of all these appointments and services on service boards and any staffing appointments, and post them on the city website, and list those appointment terms and a brief description of those jobs, and what expectations of the appointments, and when these terms expire. And at the end of any term appointment, I would like to see it in open competition, that we could actually draw in and get a big pool of applicants here. You know, they would be interested to submit an application letter, and if their option, if they'd like to straight, make a stronger case, submit even a tailored resume. I mean, or next, if...
I wish you had set the lead in that, counselor, set an example for all of us.
Well, I, like I said, that there's always room for improvement, and this is, this is now a learning experience. And like I said, I'd like to see us move in this direction, since we did catch some people at the 11th hour who would have liked to had it, but unfortunately, the qualified individual that we did identify was hands and down, hands down superior. I understand, I'm sure that our next appointed position is that of a city clerk. So I think we should, making this an open competition for this process, and to find, you know, individuals out there who may have the qualifications and may be a really good fit. Right now, like I said, there's no policy. I think it's up to us to try and make a policy, and try and be as open with this as possible, because, you know, we need to get probably the best candidates we can for all these positions.
Counselor, my only answer is, I will take it under advisement. What the new counselor does is entirely up to them. Anyone else? Counselor Camardo?
I'll keep it short and sweet. Just one thing I wanted to add is, Doug, did you put the Frederick Street Fire Station up for sale? Is that, is that in the process?
Yes, it's already listed.
It's listed. What are we asking for? Eighty thousand?
Yes. It's been listed through the Q County Realtors Association rather than going to one individual realtor. And I think the advice of Mike Burns, our assessor, was solicit at $80,000, and then see what the offers are.
Very good.
Anyone else?
That's great. Is, are we going to place a city, is the city going to put a sign there that's for sale or anything like that? Because I don't, you know...
For sale by owner?
Whatever, I, whatever the case may be, I just...
I think the Realtors have all the information. So signage, I don't know if that'll help much at all, because it's a unique property. And just to alert everybody, we may have to accept an offer subject to zoning, because that is in a residential neighborhood, depending on the use that...
Okay. It would have to come back to council, I would assume, to approve.
Absolutely, yeah. You've got to approve the sale.
Just one quick item. We hope that the, the buying of the CoGen facility will, of course, be, be more cost-effective for the city. And the CoGen facility has indeed lost money the last three years, since it went online in 2010. But to suggest that this is the magic bullet is, by any means, a far, far stretch of the truth. Watching the news this past week, you've, all of them sure have seen what's going on in Detroit and cities around upstate New York. And as the Comptroller DeNapoli just reported again, upstate, particularly upstate, is suffering from declining population, jobs, high legacy costs, and a spike in required pension contributions. The structural deficits are the problem, all right? That's, that's, that's the problem that the city is facing. And by February 1st of 2014, the city's going to have to pay a total of $4.3 million in pension payments. 2.7 for police and fire, 1.6 for regular employees. That's the reality of the situation. But we did not solve our budgetary problems by buying out the CoGen. And if we bought out the CoGen two or three years ago, we still would be having the economic difficulties that we're faced now. My main point is this, that's what has to be addressed, is the only way of economic survival is addressing the, the cost of government. And you look at, not only what's, what's in different publications, but you also look at the amount of properties that are exempt in the city. We've gone from a total decrease of $4.9 million of tax, city taxable value decrease. That's 33% of the city, and that's $5 million in appraised value taken off the tax rolls. So these are the issues that are the anchors around the necks of, of the taxpayers of the community. So that's what, that's what needs to be addressed.
Just a quick question for you. The pension payments the city's going to be making in 2014, because we were given different payment scenarios from the auditor's report. I don't remember them being $4 million in this past...
I think, I think Counselor Smith's numbers are correct. When you add together public safety and regular employees.
Uniform and non-uniform?
Yep.
Yep.
Right on.
Counselor Smith, did you happen to see the news the other night about the city of Oswego?
83%.
And, and the mayor up there, who I know is speaking exactly of what you were saying, the pension cost, the health insurance, and the properties at the college, SUNY Oswego, and the Port of Oswego, all are, are tax exempt. So it's, you know, it's, it's a bad, it's a bad problem to have, or a good problem to have, but, you know, it hurts somebody. But one gentleman was on there, and they asked him, his, you know, the average home, $70,000 home, the average taxes were going to go up to $575 a year. And one fellow, I don't know how they found him, but he said, "I like an ambulance being a few minutes away, so I'm willing to pay it." But I'm sure he's not in the majority up there, but he was the only one I seen interviewed, so.
No, I spoke to a friend of mine from Oswego, well, actually, his family lives in Oswego, and they just bought a for sale sign, and they've contacted a realtor. That's all I have.
Thank you. I have two quick items. Mr. Selby, one for you. Last night on the news, and I believe again this morning, Syracuse purchased a pile of brand-new fire hydrants, and the lead standard was, was above the minimum. So they, you know, Congress, Senator Schumer is fighting to get that changed. I don't know if we have that problem. I don't expect an answer tonight, but...
I'll find out.
If you look into it, so. And then Mr. Rossi, commissions and boards and commissions are a hot item tonight. We have, to the best of my knowledge, we have the Ethics Board and Counselor Camardo's Business Commission Committee.
Promotion Committee, yes.
Each member of council was, was allowed to pick one member for that.
Correct.
What happens with the new council? Do we change it? Or do they, old members stay, or how does that work? Or could you...
Well, they haven't been seated yet, have they?
Well, let's, let me, let me answer the question. The Ethics Board has been constituted. It has not met yet, and they serve at the pleasure of the council. So they're, they can be there a year, two years, six months, whatever, whatever the council decides. We attempted to have an organizational meeting earlier this fall, and the schedules didn't match up, but hopefully, right after the first of the year, we will do that. Fortunately, we have not had any ethics inquiries to date. But if we do, at least the board will be ready, and will be informed as to the manner in which they can deal with them. On the Business Promotion Committee, I have two names, and we can talk about this probably so the counselors can get back to me, and affirm who they might have nominated. But the committee was for a term of one year, the appointment was for a term of one year. Since it has not been constituted yet, I assume, once it's constituted, that's going to be a year that they will be in.
John, just to say, I have collected all the names.
You've got them all, okay.
The counselor has given me a name. I'm waiting for some contact information.
Okay, then they can, they can meet, and they'll serve for a year unless they don't want to serve anymore. So it's, it's up to them. But it was, again, from their appointment, it would be a one-year term.
More confused than it was, but I'll talk with you during the week, so. Thanks. Do we have a request for executive session? Or, excuse me, one second, recap?
Counselor agreed to, or requested that the landfill issue be put on the agenda for next week for a discussion, and a resolution to vote on the landfill fee option that is agreed upon for 12/19. Counselor Azika asked that the city, city consider a process for open boards and commission seats, where it's open and competitive, and he'd like to start with a city clerk position.
Well, any of them, whatever's coming up.
Well, you said city.
Yeah, that one's first, I believe.
Pardon?
That one's coming up eminently, isn't it now?
It might be, yes. I'm pretty sure it is. Yes. Let's see, Mayor Quill asked Mr. Selby to double-check on any fire hydrants that have been purchased by the city, to see if they'll have the same problem that Syracuse has. And he also asked that Counselor Rossi look into the two boards that have open seats, ethics, and the Business Promotion Commission.
And if Mr. Rossi has answered the question, so.
So it's done. Done. Okay.
Very good. Is that correct, counsel?
It is.
Thank you. We have a request for executive session.
Yes, your honor, one possible litigation and another personnel matter.
Very well. This time, entertain a motion for executive session. Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor Azika. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Graney?
Yes.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Azika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye. Be in recess for executive session.